Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, free God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay Cheryl, would you call the roll please?
Joe Burden.
Yeah.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis. Laura O'Connell. Neil Toman. Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here, thank you. Welcome to the March 2025 meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. It seems like a more packed house than we're used to, at least on a more administrative night, so there must be something I don't know about. Maybe you're gonna celebrate or mourn what I'm about to tell you. We haven't, we've had a fairly stable board for some time since Kim Connor stepped down after a decade plus of service. Tonight Neil Toman is stepping down from the board and I just want to acknowledge his years of service. Neil started when we were a couple of years into the Hudson Highlands Reserve project. I think it's fair to say he got nearly the end of it, which is great, but I want to thank Neil for his service to this community. He's been a thoughtful partner. He brings real world experience. He was a kind colleague. In my absences, he took the helm many times of this chair, which can require some work and cause other people to go into coughing fits. But this is, it's an honor to have, honor to have Neil have served with us and we wish him the best, whatever he does, and I know we'll see him often in this community and maybe at future planning board meetings if he looks for some entertainment. So that's, that's the news on the board. For those of you who are Roberts Rules fans, let me just suggest the following exciting notion for tonight. We have four board members here tonight. Anything that's not of a unanimous vote among the four of us does not pass because you must have a majority, not of those present, but the majority of the board, which is four out of seven, so we don't have four votes. So I know my fellow board members who want to cause chaos may want to do something to throw a curveball when we do many of our mini resolutions, but I'm hoping it's smooth sailing from here on. Anyway, with that said, can I have a motion approved the minutes from February? Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, any comments? Edits, deletions? Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
She said aye.
I said aye.
Oh.
I'm not sowing chaos. I said aye.
Opposed, abstention? It's great. Motion passes, thank you very much. All right, we will continue the KPB public hearing. I'd let Margaret from Beatty and Watson give us an update on what's going on.
Good evening. We updated the planting plan after discussion with, after the meeting last time. We put the hours of operation onto all of the plans so that that will be known. We updated the EAF to reflect the plan because there were a couple of changes that hadn't been picked up in the EAF, so you got an updated EAF. Additionally, we are replacing the existing fence with a new fence and moving the fence to the property line. That will give more space for the plantings along the edge of the property. I know from an email earlier that I received that the next door neighbor has asked that we extend the fence farther so that they don't have to see the driveway. We can extend it all the way to the road, but we can put a couple additional panels so that they will, you know, be blocked from seeing the driveway entrance. We doubled the amount of trees. We stacked them rather than just have the single row. We added, we added additional ones in front of the septic system, which I, because we could be 10 feet away and then we could plant them and we picked something that doesn't have a large root ball so that it won't interfere with the septic system. And those are the majority of the changes.
Okay. Anyone from the member of the public want to speak? That's okay, come on up.
Hi, members of the board. I would just like, really just to go back to what I said at the last meeting, which was, we're not looking to stop or really cause like any issues. I met with Sean yesterday. We're just really wanting to make sure that we understand what was happening and that there's some privacy. And I think we pretty much came to a common understanding that he did come out. We walked the property line. We discussed, you know, the proposed plans. I did have a couple of questions, which I emailed the board about. He said at the end of the property line, he kind of showed me like where it was being staked out, that there was some additional fencing going down. We did discuss the couple of panels if it was possible to put something down towards Route 9 because our lower yard still is literally right up next to where the retaining wall will be and we do spend a lot of time down there. That, that's really it. I mean, in the question, the one question that I did have that we didn't get to ask yesterday is, it's my understanding that the current fence that is there is going to come down and be down during construction. And he said that the.
We're gonna, we decided we're gonna keep that up.
Let her finish it and then you guys can stand up in the microphone because no one's gonna. I know, but no one's gonna really hear you in the public and that's why we got all this AV stuff. So finish what you're saying. It's a little theatrical, but finish what you're saying and then you can come up, please, and say it.
Well, that, that actually kind of was one of my questions was the current fence that's there. He explained that it was going, the, where the fence is now, it sits back on the berm and so that he said it had to come over to the property line. So I was just going to ask, is it possible that that, when it's taken down, that the existing fence can be moved over and remain intact? So it's just still providing some privacy during construction?
So we discussed, you know, construction sequencing and that fence can stay up until at the end. And, and actually that fence does sit on a berm and if we move to the property line, it's, it's, it's a couple of feet lower. So we're going to put, which I have to add to the plan, a small retaining wall to keep the elevation of the fence at the height that it is now.
Okay, good. Beth, anything else you want to add?
So is it the understanding of the retaining wall? I'm just pointing to the tree line.
It'll be right where the fence is, right along the property line and then the fence will be right behind it. It'll just be one of those ready rock walls.
Okay, so would it go the whole length of the property?
Um, it'll go, well, it'll go where it needs, yeah. But yeah, from the picture, it looks like it has to go the length.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I just want to look at my notes real quick to make sure I asked everything. I, I think that's really pretty much it. Like since we were able to talk, it kind of ironed out like some things. It's just again, the privacy with the fencing, the trees were put up, just whatever we can do in the lower part towards Route 9. What I wasn't quite sure of is how tall are the trees that are being installed?
So we picked the giant arborvitae's, which will grow to be 40 to 50 feet high, but they come and they're about, I think we picked the six to eight feet and you can't really put anything bigger than that in because the roots just, they just don't transplant well, so you can't really, you know, like you could put one tree, but you can't put 50 trees like that. It just, it just doesn't work.
Okay.
And they do grow two feet a year.
Okay. And really, the only other, the last question I have is some concerning over the property line that the fence was having to come over. So I just need maybe a little bit of clarification. I don't know if I can just address him.
Well, I'm sure either of them can come up and answer your question.
Yeah, it's, when we were talking, he was saying towards the back of the fence line that the fence has to come over. And so I just wanted to kind of clarify exactly with that because when I look at the site plan, it seems like where the berm is.
Margaret seems not, not to be catching example you're asking.
So the existing fence will move over about four feet towards here and then down here it moves over about 10 because the fence is, yeah, it's on an angle. But, you know, like up here is the tree line up here, so the fence will kind of marry into the tree.
So it's just kind of staying where it is then? Because our discussion was that when it got to this end, it kicked out like over this way, so.
Oh, I, I would just keep it straight. There's no reason to kick it out.
Yeah.
It would just be on the property line.
Really, I think that's kind of it since our last meeting.
Feel like a mediator, it's fun. Go ahead, please.
The last time you spoke to us, you also raised some concerns about noise. Did you get a chance to talk to the property owner about that?
We, we didn't discuss that. I mean, really unless you're, I personally don't really see a way that we can mitigate that only other than like operating hours and what exactly, like you're doing. Like during those hours. We didn't discuss that when we were there. We've discussed it in the past, but I mean, it's a landscaping company. There's dump trucks, there's weed whackers, there's blowers. They start up in the morning, they come back in the evening, you know, whenever you're in and out. So I mean, is, i- if there's a way to really kind of like curb when you're there, like, you know, getting plows in the middle of the night, you know, and starting things up when you're there, you know, in the morning, starting blowers and loading up on the truck? I, I don't see what else that you can do about that. I mean, that's just something we've lived with since it's been there.
I don't know if there's some conditions that could be put on the approval that the noise should, you know, should, noise should be avoided.
With operating hours.
Yeah. The town has noise ordinances and, and the operating hours have been put, posted on the site plan. Yeah. I mean, we have, they have to comply with.
Well, yeah, but you can go beyond the town's noise ordinance in terms of approving a use like you're, you're seeking to have done here. Now, the vehicles going in and out, I don't know there's much you can, you can do about. You can add a note perhaps saying that you won't have them idle for a substantial amount of time, five minutes, I don't know. You can say no operation of equipment before, all right, eight o'clock? Something along those lines. You put a note on or you put conditions on if the property owner next door has problems with it, she can come to the building inspector and he would cite them and hopefully put a stop to it. But something along those lines could be considered.
Can I say something?
Please come up.
I don't know, maybe I should.
What about if there's a snowstorm and we have to come in the middle of the night? That's part of my business, so we can't be stopped and we have to go to the firehouse and plow or this place and plow. I gotta put a plow on the truck. It's just how, how it operates. It's a landscaping company.
Vehicles in and vehicles out aren't an issue. The issue is idling vehicles on the property or starting equipment, whether it's leaf blowers or what have you.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm fine with that. But it's like if I gotta come in at one o'clock in the morning to start a truck, start a machine up, gotta warm up the truck and then you leave. I'm not sitting there for an hour.
And, and remember that trucks will now be.
15, 20 minutes.
In the garage, they'll be. The, the trucks will now be.
You have diesel trucks.
The trucks will now be housed in a garage instead of outside, so they don't take as long to warm up.
Quieter in a garage, did that about it? But how long you have to warm up a truck before you?
15, 20 minutes on a diesel truck.
Seriously?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Some are even longer than that.
That's the maximum, the minimum you need, you could impose the minimum then. 15 minutes, but not half an hour. I, I'm just asking you to come up with something. I'm not trying to dictate.
No, no, I'm, I'm just being realistic. I'm not gonna say 15 minutes when I gotta warm up. My first guy starts the first truck, okay, then he goes over to the next truck and then he puts a plow on and this and that. You got a half an hour of warming up trucks. I mean, you're going past, you hear Route 9 traffic is louder than my trucks. Let's be real here, you know?
Well, you'd know better what's practical than I would, but the point is you could come up with something as opposed to just saying we'll abide by the noise ordinance.
You want to say something else?
In a, in the interest of trying to be a good neighbor, as we had said before, I, I don't want to go tit for tat. We've lived here. I, I know what happens. I know how long the trucks idle. I know what time they're coming in. I know that this building going up and everything, like the hours that trucks are coming in and they're on the other end of our house, they're now going to be on the end of where more of the primary bedrooms are. And I know when my children have woken me up when they're there getting salt and it's 1:00, 1:30, I get it, it's blizzards. You know, we, we haven't really much complained about that because it's like people are trying to do business, people are trying to make a living, but we're also living there. So I do understand that the trucks are gonna idle. It's more of just trying to be respectful of like when they're coming in. Guys blast music, they're out in the yard, they're yelling, laughing, you know, whatever, yelling back and forth at each other, like I, I know what goes on there and with the town, so I'm, with the noise. So it, it, much more of restricting the hours or just trying to like really be more cognizant of, you know, I'm not trying to stop them from doing business, I get it, you know, but it's, other than like what you said, like putting up a giant wall, it's just being more cognizant of really like what you're doing at what hours and trying to just keep a rein on it.
All right. Margaret, anything else you want to add?
We have samples of the siding, if you want to take a look.
I mean, I, I, I think we can see it.
This is the stone that will be at the bottom.
The bottom on the retaining wall, you mean?
No, that'll be. The building has like, next to the garage bays, there's a little stone probably two feet down. Instead of having exposed concrete, it's going to be treated with stone. It's going to be hardy board plank. It's not a metal building, so it'll be hardy board plank. It's this emerald green color and white trim. And then the roof is a metal roof. It'll be like a brown color, which is like that. Oh, I guess we had it the other way. I guess I did it wrong. It's the other way.
Is there a rendition of the retaining wall and the bridge or whatever you want to call it, the driveway they're putting in?
I do not have a detail of the wall, of the wall. The walls that are needed for, yeah.
The driveway, right?
It'll be ready rock. It'll be like a ready rock wall.
Okay, any other questions from the public? Please, come on up to.
So there seems to be.
Just identify yourselves.
Oh, my name is Dan Bailey. I live on Old West Point Road West. So it seems to be a big issue about screening from Route 9. Cars go by Route 9 55 miles an hour, hopefully. They're not going to see this building to start with, but my concern is coming down Old West Point Road. Everybody.
Let, let him finish, let him finish, please, continue.
Everybody can see into this yard. You can see all the trucks he has back there right now. You can see all the billing materials he has back there right now. One of the board members, I believe, brought up the fact that there's styrofoam floating around back there and everything else still there, still floating around the neighborhood. Every time there's a windstorm, and I understand it's, it's wind and it goes around, but at least cover the stuff up and keep it on your own property. So my, my thing is, how about screening from Old West Point Road West where we can actually see the building more coming down at, you know, five, 10 miles an hour than go home by Route 9 going 55 miles an hour? And my second thing is, what's to prevent him or any of his employees or anybody he rents to driving onto Old West Point Road West after the new driveway is constructed? Because I see nothing in the drawing where cuts off any access to Old West Point Road, which is a residential, small, one lane road. This was the fact that the right of way, or not the right of way, but the parcel was created off of Route 9 to go into the property, into this commercial property to service that property in the first place. So he drives in and out of there now, or whoever drives in and out of there now, with large trucks, bobcats. I've seen excavators go in there. I've seen tractor trailers backing in there. This is the stuff that we want to stop. So again, the screening on Old West Point Road is, you know, a good thing to have. And, you know, the guy, I understand the guy's got to be in business. I understand he's got a big bike there. He's paid a lot of money for that piece of property and he needs to use it. I understand that, but he has to have respect for the rest of the people in the neighborhood. I thank you.
Thank you. You want to say it? Go ahead, Margaret.
So this, you can go, presently, this is the existing driveway goes past the existing house and connects to this parking over here. There is a break. We're going to break it here. There's a fence and plants that will shield Old West Point Road from the building and the property. These, these are all plants. These are all trees. So there's a fence, there's a break, you know? We've created a green space for the residential house and there's fencing and plants, screening the construction yard from Old West Point Road.
So what you're saying, Margaret, is there is screening from Old West Point Road?
Yes.
That's question one, did this, sorry, again, your name is, I'm sorry?
Uh, Dan.
Dan asked, and the second topic of ingress egress will now be off Route 9.
Correct.
So there will be no access of trucks, et cetera, through Old West, which is the whole reason why we're talking about this.
Correct.
Okay.
Not whatsoever?
No, there, there was, there's no longer a driveway connecting them and those are fence and plants between them, so he can't drive out that way.
I understand that that is not on the plan.
It is on the plan. It's right there on the plan.
Well, okay, I understand that the driveway.
Dan, why don't you come back up to the mic? Dan, why don't you come back up to the mic? Because the people at home can't hear you.
This is the plan.
I understand that.
Okay.
I, I had to read that. So on the plan, it does not show the driveways connecting. So theoretically, you do not drive onto Old West Point Road. I want to know is, what's to prevent him, after everything is said and done, driving a truck onto Old West Point Road?
Well, there's fence and plant.
Steve, could you respond to that? Since it feels like that's a, that's.
What you can drive between the plants.
And through the fence.
It's not completely fenced off. It's not completely fenced off. Is that correct?
There is no driveway connection. There, there's a fence.
I understand that.
And trees. I.
What, what would prevent this man, after he gets done building this, if he decides that he wants to drive out here, what, what's to prevent him from doing that?
Well, because it's not part of his site plan, it would be in violation of his site plan. So you could call the town and they would give him a violation. Okay.
Dan, I think, I think we got your question, so thank you.
Okay.
I think we got you. Okay. So Steve, let's assume that there is no physical barrier. Could you just give maybe Dan and the rest of the public comfort about what the whole purpose of the site plan is such that, what would prevent a truck from driving from the residential side, if you will, to the commercial side?
Well, to Dan's point, physically, I guess it may be theoretically possible to do that. It might do some damage to the trees and the fence or what have you. But as was mentioned, when you have a site plan that in, has a specific ingress and egress and another area is indicated as landscaping and a grassed area, you can't be driving trucks over a yard onto the roadway. If you do and either the town finds out about it or a neighbor reports it, then the building inspector would go out and cite them and say you're in violation of your site plan. Not only could they be fined, the town could commence an action for what's called an injunction, prohibiting them from continuing to do that. If they continued, they'd be in contempt of court and so forth and so on. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I really think it's, it's extremely unlikely that that would, would occur and if it did, there are plenty of remedies to take care of it.
Okay. Any other members of the public, please, sir?
My name's Tim Donovan. I live on Old West Point Road, about a half mile in. And, yeah, I have, I have some similar questions. Is it Stephen? You said there's a yard that, right, on the, on the site plan. Is it, does that mean there's a yard between the commercial lot and then, and the residential lot and then Old West Point Road?
I'd let Margaret answer that. She can tell you better about the plan than I can.
Because you, you said that they can't drive over a yard.
It's what it looks like it is to me.
Right.
So this is the end of the gravel park commercial. We're putting fence here and here and there's already a fence here and we're putting trees here. So this is the existing driveway, but the existing driveway now comes straight through.
Yeah, I know.
So that, this will be a yard, there's a well here. Okay, so this.
Right, so normally we just typically go right out that way.
That's what they do now. They go straight out that way.
Okay, so basically there's going to be a yard, there's going to be, is it a, a fence with a gate?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So my next question is the building with respect to housing. Will this barn that's going to be built, will it ever be suitable for an apartment?
There's no site plan for none of us about an apartment. We're being asked, it's a storage facility and garage space.
Right, with, with bathrooms. Okay.
But that's not the site plan.
No, I, okay, it's not, I'm just, I'm asking as to whether or not there's some kind of barrier to it.
Stay around for a later, uh, plan we have with the.
Well, right, so the reason I ask that is that there are few, there, there are actually very few pieces of property in Phillips Town with the number of residents on it as there are at this property. And private property is private property, I get it. But when you're putting a 5,000 square foot unit on top of that, you know, one might consider that a reasonable question when it's pretty populated now. My other question is, you know, contractors come and go and if contractors have their vehicles in the back, will they be parking their residential car somewhere in the front lot and then perhaps walking through the fence to get to their contractor vehicle that they may be driving out driveway? I mean, that means it's a dual purpose resident. If contractors are pulling their car into the.
I, I can answer.
You follow what I'm saying?
There's no retail sale, so there's no, contractors aren't coming. It's just the employees. He doesn't sell onsite, is that what you're saying?
No, but there are, there are other contractor vehicles onsite from other contract, other companies.
Well, there's parking, adequate parking and there's.
Right, so I'm, I'm just asking if, if people who have contractor vehicles on the property, which is, you know, it's normal, it's fun. which is, you know, it's normal, it's fine.
Right.
And my question is, with the people who have those vehicles, you know, where they're going to, they drop off their residential car, are they going to drop it off at the residence and then walk through the fence and then go pick up their commercial vehicle and go out to work?
That is not the intention.
Okay, good.
The intention is to have.
I'm bringing that up now.
A single-family house, a single-family house and its use. And then the business and its use.
Perfect.
Separated.
I'm, I'm just want to make sure, going on the record. You know, the, I got two other points. One is the residence on the, on Old West Point Road that faces it. When you drive down Old West Point Road, it, you know, I wouldn't call it messy. Okay? It is for, I mean, it's just not right. And there's garbage everywhere. It's baloney all over the place.
That's what we observed at the site.
And, but it's not the commercial site. It's the, it's the residence adjacent to it. And I would just appreciate it if, if there could be some kind of screening there. People deserve to live in, you know, whatever they, you know, whatever they choose to. It's just, I would appreciate that if it's possible. The last question is that regardless of whether you approve the barn, which I can understand both arguments, I'm not going to go there. But regardless of whether you do or you don't, is this an either-or? Meaning, there's work going on back there and I've been stuck perpendicular to Route 9 twice, on, on the yellow line with vehicles coming down Old West Point Road. So my point is, if the barn is not approved, does that mean no-go on the access to Route 9? Or is this about, you know, you're going to get, you're going to put a driveway into Route 9 no matter what, even, even if we don't approve the barn? That's my concern. There should be, there should be a ramp onto Route 9 because of the size of the vehicles. Private business, got it. I actually love the idea of businesses. But there should be a driveway onto Route 9 regardless of whether there's a barn approved. Just, you know, and so that's my point.
Thank you. Can anyone else want to speak? Beth, come on up.
I meant to ask this before, but Cheryl was gracious enough to share like the pictures that I sent. I just didn't know if anyone had any questions for me for clarification of what I sent.
We have them. Thank you for them. Anyone?
Out of curiosity, who marked these photos up?
I'm sorry?
Who marked the photos up?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, my only question was the, which Margaret actually answered was the retaining wall, bringing the fence back to the property line. If there was any, if there's going to be any additional fill brought in to then run that new fence line. But she said that there would be, so I know that was one of your questions in here.
That was on the hand, but yeah, they answered it.
Okay, anyone else want to speak? Okay. Board members, any other questions?
I wouldn't mind having Beth walk us through these photos so we make sure that we're looking at, at what she wants us to see.
Well, I feel like that's part of the public hearing. So let's, so what do you want her to walk through, all these pictures?
Well, the ones that have her handwriting on them.
Okay.
Just to make sure we know what it is she's trying to point out.
Let's do that in a bit of a quick fashion because there's a lot of pictures here and I don't think we all need a storyboarding session.
Really, the, the main point of the pictures was to kind of show like what was there when we purchased it, what was there after it was cleared and then like the current conditions. And then just to answer a lot of the, you know, to state like our conversation we had the other day. And most of the questions like were, were answered. A lot of it was just about the property line, but she said that it's, the fence is just going to be going straight, like to follow the existing property line.
Okay.
There was, there was a comment made at the last meeting that only one neighboring property owner showed up. Well, that's because the two houses in this picture are owned by KBP or, you know, Mr. Barton. So that's why there's only one of us that boarded this besides the other two people that live on Old West Point. This picture was just to say that this is the lower yard to give you some perspective, which I'll show you guys, like that's what we were talking about. I think that was. Yeah, and this picture was just kind of giving you guys some reference that kind of recapped our conversation that we agreed what he was going to do there and he mentioned about the fence coming over.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Okay. I think at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dan. Second. Thank you, Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extention. Public hearing is now closed. Okay. Steve, you want to give us an update, what, what comes next?
Well, you've held and closed the public hearing. If the board, well, next would see if Ron has any comments as far as the, the site plan goes. But if Ron is satisfied, the next thing would be to direct him to prepare approval resolutions.
Ron?
The board has a technical memorandum from my office. I've tried to summarize the overall scope of project as well as its current status before the board. The board has resolved all prior administrative and procedural issues. This last item is just the conduct and closing of a public hearing. I do have technical issues that the applicant's engineer has that need to be resolved. But once those are done, you can consider action on the application.
Any board members' questions for the applicant? No? Go ahead.
I think there's, based on the discussion that we had, I would love to see some conditions placed on any approval, like property has to be cleaned so that plastic doesn't, you know, it, it was really truly, I've never, I mean, I've been on the floor now for a long time. I don't know, four or five years or something. I've never seen a property look like that, never, the entire time. I think it should be cleaned up. I was just want, so that would be one condition. I think that there should be other conditions reflecting some of the comments that we heard. And do, would you have any objection to that or?
There's no outdoor storage. So once the site plan is done, there should be nothing outside. There's, all the storage will be inside the building.
But the property should be cleaned up. Before, I, I think as a condition of approval, the property should be cleaned up. I'd like to see it again cleaned.
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay.
Other conditions? Your thinking?
Well, the other condition would be, I think there, the, you know, if there's, if there needs to be work at night, the neighbors are understanding of that, because that's the nature of the business. But I think that there should be a condition that there isn't radio playing, the trucks idle, the, you know, no more than X amount. I don't know how long, I guess it sounds like 20 minutes. And that there shouldn't be loud talking, that people should, you know, use quiet, talk quietly. I mean, not library voices, whatever, but, you know, quiet voices so they don't disturb the children. You know, would you have any objection to that?
Do you have an objection to that?
I mean, we can figure something out.
Yeah, just something that's reasonable.
I'm sure we can figure out some wording, but.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a commercial property in a residential district. It's a residence in a commercial district.
Right, but it seems like you, it can coexist. It seems like it can coexist because they're certainly being completely reasonable about understanding. They're not getting it. They know there has to be plows in the middle of the night at times. So I just, I'm hoping that there could be, you know, it seems like you've already talked quite a bit and worked some things out very well. So hopefully it can just be, you know, amicably done that way. And I guess that gentleman's concerned about anybody living in the building. Would you have an objection to a condition that the building?
There's no, it's not, it's not a.
It's a, it's a, it's a concrete.
Yeah, we're, we're approving a site plan for storage. We're not approving a site plan for an apartment.
Okay, but we're talking about a property where there was a violation previously. I, I think under those circumstances, we could ask for more.
I, I hear you, but we're not approving a site plan for an apartment. For example, in a couple of hours, or maybe an hour, we're going to talk about Kingsley. Actually, we're talking about next. Kingsley had to come back to us to get a change in the site plan because they're adding apartments. This guy can't just stick an apartment up there without coming back to us.
I don't think the worry was about an apartment. The worry was about people possibly living there, just living there.
Just, I'm going to step up real quick. So it's, it's labeled as storage. There's no heat up there. It's not going to be heated storage. The bathroom is downstairs. It's a concrete superstructure. It's not a barn. It's steel and concrete floor up top, concrete floor down below. And there's no possible way to live up there. So, and if I wanted to make it into apartments 20 years down the road, I don't even know if it's allowed, I'd have to come back to you. So, and I'm not putting a condition that there's not going to be apartments ever because then that puts a burden on me.
I wasn't saying that, I, I think.
But that's the way we're coming along.
What I was hearing was a concern that somebody might be living there. It happens. It happens. Without there being an apartment, it happens. We all know that. So I don't, I, I would be more comfortable if there was a condition, no one will be living in this space. Living, sleeping, whatever.
The driveway itself is going to be asphalt because of the steepness of it. And then the, it'll be gravel at the top. So it's still pretty impervious. It's hard with a, when you have trucks driving over everything. We are capturing the roof rainwater and putting that into infiltrators.
I saw that, right.
Overall, there will be a reduction in the amount of impervious surface because areas that are now hardpan or gravel will be restored to grass. So there is like maybe 36,000 square feet of impervious surface now and it's going to go down to about 28. So there's, you know, 8,000 square foot reduction in impervious surface, so.
And the outfall itself, which is to the south of the driveway, that's going to be for stormwater or roof drainage that's.
So the.
Excess, excessive, anything that goes over the infiltrator that will go down?
Yes.
Right.
It'll bypass, yeah.
Is that, that outlet looks fairly close to the neighboring property? And I'm wondering if.
It's directed downhill, so it won't go towards.
It's not going to cut into the neigh, if there's a, if there's a large, a large influx of water that's going through that system, it's not going to erode away the embankment there and go onto the neighboring.
There's a velocity dissipator at the outlet of the.
Right.
So that slows down the water and directs it in the direction you want it to go.
That's, yeah, that's, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Dan, say anything?
No, I'm fine.
All right, I have two, two questions. One, I would like to see a version of the, can you put up the picture you had of the, of the structure from 9D, from 9, please? There's all the rest of the clients you have tonight? Thank you. So do you have a similar version of this for the view from Old West Point Road as people would be driving, I guess, east and then south onto 9?
I do not, and I don't even know. Like, I took this picture from Google Maps. And can you drive on Old West Point Road on Google Maps, do you know? Have you ever dropped?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it, it will be similar. I mean.
Here's what I'm saying is, I, given that the audience tonight, the whole reason we have a public comment is to hear what the public is concerned about. We've talked about this. I appreciate this conversation about screening. The screening not only is for Route 9, but is also for what other roads would see it. And I, it's as reasonable, and I think Dan's point's reasonable, that would be good to see what the screening will look like from Old West Point Road as well.
I'm sure I can come up with something.
I'm sure you, I am very confident that you can come up with it. That's one. Two, I thought we had a visual of the, I keep calling it a bridge, but wherever this driveway is, which I guess will be to the north of that garbage container there, do we have a visual on that?
We have the site plan.
But there's no, there's no version of this drawing? You just have it has a mock-up of what it's going to look like? I thought we.
I have just the profile of the driveway, but I don't have the walls in them.
I, I, I wouldn't think it would be beneficial to see what it will look like before it is built. It is, it will be a new and different-looking structure on Route 9. I'd like to see what it looks like.
Okay.
If you can do, make a mock-up of that. Again, if you just take your same, the picture you just showed us with the structure and just show us what the driveway will look like with its retaining walls coming from either north or south, it doesn't really matter to me. I think that would be a useful illustration for us. Is that, is that a burden? I'm sorry.
I.
I think that's very typical of what you guys typically do is draw us facsimiles of what things will.
I can, I can do a profile.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It would just be good to see that. And I just want to come back to, could you go back, sorry. Could you go on the property, I guess, south of the two residential buildings Mr. Barton has? So the two residential buildings, can you just point to where they are, the houses?
Sure, just a second.
Yeah, sorry. This looks like very complicated software to use.
My fingers.
Oh, is it, is it, okay.
So here.
I see one of the houses. Where's the other house?
The other house is up here.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
I have an aerial view if you want me to.
Yeah, sure. That'd be great. I, before I lead you any further, without obvi, without me being obvious, I just want to play out Dan's concern that a, an errant vehicle comes up Old West Point Road. And yeah, thank you. So if I may, so, it's a little taller than I am. So it come up Old West Point, thank you, awesome. Amazing, amazing. So the building's going here, right?
A little farther up.
Up, what's up?
Towards the other house.
More towards where the blue is.
North, south, east, west?
North on the, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Close to there.
So it goes up here. So I drive, let's just say this guy is not listening because he's supposed to, everyone's supposed to come up the driveway from Route 9, right?
There is no retail, so the only people that will come there are people who work there.
But an employee comes to work in the morning.
Yes.
He or she comes to work. He or she is supposed to use the driveway.
Yes.
Sorry, the new driveway, yes, which is here.
The new driveway, yes.
Well, let's just say this errant employee who's not paying attention and maybe doesn't, maybe it's his first day at work and he doesn't know where to go. He comes up here, plops in, passes the two retail houses.
He can.
Okay, and tell, and though he's not allowed to, what stops him?
A fence and trees.
That's what, that's what, I'm just asking. So the fence goes where? Here or some?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably a little farther in.
Okay, so is that on your, is that on your, can we go back to the plan now? We spent a long time talking about the fence to the south, towards Beth's house. That's not what I'm asking about. I'm asking about trying to stop the Dan's.
Fence and trees.
So just show me that picture, just so I, because obviously I didn't catch that part or at least understand where it was. So where is this fence?
There is a fence here, uh, here. Fence along this with trees.
Great. Okay. Now I understand. Thank you. That's great.
Okay, and if we go. There's an existing fence here. There's an existing fence here. And this fence will come here. And there's trees, so you can't, unless you were going to drive through the trees and through a fence, you could not get from this driveway to this yard.
All right, great. Thank you, Margaret. Okay, so if you could develop those couple of pictures for us for next month, that would be very helpful for us to see, and then we will pick it up from there. Other board members' questions?
Are you going to keep the public hearing open?
No, we closed the public hearing already.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right, so next month, we're just going to look at the couple of drawings you've brought and if there are any other questions on, from you guys of what we've discussed here, uh, from you guys of what we've discussed here, but we can move on from there. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. And thank you, Mr. Barton, for, you know, it's, uh, these, these smaller hearings where a lot of people have some opinions, you got to listen, and I appreciate that as a Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Kingsley now. Public hearing you want, this is, this is our first of this public hearing, yeah? Okay, well, so we would like to read the, uh, notice, please.
The planning board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, starting at seven thirty PM at the Phillips Towne Town Hall, two thirty-eight Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, to consider the following application. Kingsley, fifty Old Albany Post Road North, Cold Spring, New York, one oh five one six, tax map number one seven dot dash one dash seven two dot two. Project amended site plan minor. Applicant is seeking amended site plan approval to convert a four bay garage into two one-bedroom apartments. Two two-bedroom upper floor apartments in the current mixed-use building shall remain. The multifamily dwelling shall be served by an existing separate subsurface sewage treatment system to be expanded and an existing private water supply well. Dated at Phillips Town, New York, this twentieth day of February twenty twenty-five. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Jason?
Hey.
Jason Snyder with Beatty and Watson, representing the applicants, Forrest Kingsley and Ian Kingsley. Unfortunately, they had some prior engagements, so they were not able to attend tonight, but they certainly wanted to be here. So, um, as Cheryl said, this is a, an amended site plan uh, for a mixed-use uh, building and a mixed-use, in the mixed-use zoning district, they want to convert the bottom uh, the garage bays, uh, on the, on the ground floor to two uh, one-bedroom apartments. So that requires a, uh, conversion of a mixed-use structure, requires a special permit. Um, all the work is associated with the, with the, with the previous approval is, has been completed. The septic well, all the parking, uh, the building has a CO. And all, everything outside is, is, is going to remain as is. It's just interior, uh, some interior renovations to convert the ground floor. And there's also some work associated with the, um, septic system that's required. Um, I actually just got comments, um, uh, from the Health Department, uh, today, just a couple of, uh, things to clean up on the plan and they're going to approve it, so um, that should be all, that should be all squared away by, uh, the beginning of next week. So, um, that's, um, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, Jason. All right, members of the public, anyone wish to speak on Kingsley's application? Sir?
Uh, John Dwyer, I live on Mountain Brook Drive. Um, when the original site was approved, when the project was approved, we approached you about the safety aspect of that driveway and you still approved it in where it went. And, um, I had said my, my kid's bus goes through there, and I think Dennis, you went out and said the bus didn't go through there. But the bus, there's a bus stop right in the front of that entrance. And now you're going to add, what, six, maybe eight now, cars coming out of there? Well, you will, because if you've got two double, two double bedrooms upstairs, right?
That, that's already
Jason, let the man finish.
Right, you have two already upstairs. So if you put two cars per apartment, right, that's going to go in there, you could have eight cars coming out there. So the real aspect, what I want the board to take on board is, make, can you make the road safer? Old Albany Post. Because I know you're going to approve this, I think, based on the fact that the Kingsleys have already marked out their mailbox post for the next two mailboxes. Um, and I'm, you know, because in today, there's also four bays in that building, so will they put, are they going to take all four bays out? Are they going to leave the other two and then come back down the line and look for two more apartments in there? And the other aspect is, we have a lot of multi-appartment buildings right on that road, right? We have nine. We'll have this one, and then we'll have the one at the very end of Old Albany Post. But I know myself, when, when I go down there, I see a lot of people are flying down that road. And when the people start to drive in and out, we could have more cars coming in and out of that lot, right? There's definitely going to be an accident eventually out of there. So if you can, that's what, because I don't think, can stop the project, but I would like the board to really take on and look at making that road safer. Because if you go down on the turn to pass where Craig lives, you cannot see around that turn. Right? And I talked to Ian the other night, and he even mentioned that, that even when he comes out of the Reservoir Road, he can't see what's happening, right? So I don't know if you can, how you're going to fix the road a little bit to, people can see what's going on there, because coming from the south, heading north, that road is a hill and you can't see who's coming in and out. Right? So I would, that's the main reason I'm here, because I think the other stuff is going to go ahead. I mean, I do find it ironic that they got the approval, as soon as they got the CO, two years later, they're going to put two apartments in there. Because we'll still have the Kingsleys and everybody's trucks coming in and out, right? Because originally, not out of that lot, but out of Reservoir Road. Because they weren't adding any equipment to that road when they moved into the new Lot fifty. But now that they're, they're still going to be based out of their own current lot, right? And that's going to come out on the Old Albany as well.
Anything else?
Um, no, that was my questions, and I can show you photographs of the bus or anything like that if you need it.
Be more than welcome to give us whatever details you want to look at. Okay, sir?
Good evening. Craig Mieszaski. I apologize, I just came from work, so I apologize for the hat this evening. Um, I want to thank Beth for her comments this evening. I find it ironic that a person who's trying to just live a decent life with her family, has to come to the podium and apologize multiple times for just trying to live. I get her points are somewhat offensive to her neighbor, but I found it interesting that just by speaking out, she felt she had to apologize for just trying to live. So with that, I want to say this evening, I found it interesting that in twenty-three seconds, you, I counted, you tried to just say
All right, well, no, no personal attacks. That, that's not appropriate. Please
No, it's not.
It is, just please give your comments on the project.
I know, but it's not necessary. I find it interesting here that the Kinglys are not here this evening, but I'm supposed to be in Mexico, but I delayed my trip for a whole day to make sure I'm here this evening. They are asking to put in an apartment building on their property. It is no longer a residential place. Either it's going to be a mixed-use or it's going to be residence. Are they going to try to put four apartments and still have their trucks there? I live next door. My property looks at theirs as clear as day. And all day long, there are trucks and cars coming and going. I don't know who is who, and I want to be neighborly. I apologize to the Kinglys. I wish they were here so I could apologize to them and say, I'm just a concerned citizen who lives next door to you, but you're not here tonight. There are so many trucks coming and going. I don't know who these people are. And I find what's most interesting is that this building that's next door to my home, which was actually built eight years before this town was even incorporated. My home was built in seventeen eighty. Their building is an atrocity next to mine. These giant bays. There isn't even gravel in the driveway. It is mud. It is mud. And now they want to add just more apartments, more people? What is, what is the stopping of that? Can all of these people just sit outside and host barbecues or, or park as many cars as they want? I don't know. I never see the same car there day in and day out. I play outside every day and look at their building, and I never see the same car. I don't know who's even there. And they want to add more to it? I, I'm just confused, and they're not even here to answer any of these questions. I'm sure there's a reason, but there's a reason I'm here. I didn't buy a house from seventeen eighty to have the person next to me build an apartment building. There are huge gas tanks in front, I don't even know why they have this much propane in front of their house. These enormous propane tanks. Who are they servicing? They're not concerned about the aesthetic of the community, as John is here, as my neighbor across the street is here. We live in a residential. I get it, it's a mixed-use property, but this building does not represent anything about the community. Does not re, every home in our town, in our neighborhood, is a paved driveway with a home. This thing is, has huge bay doors and, and is a mess. And, and I don't know how they're even coming to you and asking to add more apartments when their entire driveway, this enormous driveway, is just mud.
I feel like we're repeating ourselves a bunch.
I know you are, but I'm trying to make sure I'm quite clear.
I think we heard, is there anything, I, I just, for the purposes of
I want to make sure that before you walk away, I bought this house and spent the last ten years renovating it for this thing to be built next to me, and the people who are asking for this application are not here this evening. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else want to speak tonight? Going once. Going twice. Okay, a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, Neil, the only thing I would say is that Jason had wanted to put some comments on the record.
Yeah, well, well, he can, no, he, well, whether it's in the public, it doesn't, I don't know if it matters which side of the public hearing he makes the comments on, does it?
No, no, I guess you're right.
He's going to talk, I'm going to ask him to answer, feel, feel free. Respond to whatever you want to respond.
What, do you, what do you want? I don't, I don't have anything to say to that.
I think, I think, I'm pretty sure the board's going to ask you some questions after that. So, back to what I was saying, motion to close the public hearing?
I made that motion.
All right, second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay.
I think we should keep the public hearing open until the Kingsleys can, can attend and, 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 and respond to some of the comments.
Any questions?
We have never, ever required the applicant to come before us if they don't come. We, in fact, half the, tonight, we're going to have Ferguson Chen. I don't think they're here. I, I don't know if that's a fair
What, what questions do you have, Heidi?
Hold on, hold on. Let's just finish, let's finish this topic. If that's your reason, I do not know if that is a, we've never had that as a precedent where we have to have the applicant here because someone says, why are you not here? I understand he's frustrated, but
No, I'm not saying it because he's frustrated. I'm saying it because I don't think we're going to get answers to the questions that have been raised. I, I mean, for example, the bus stop. Where is the bus stop? Do you know where the school bus stop is?
We did that whole study. We, I mean, I, I can't believe that we're, I can't believe we're revisiting this.
Well, we just heard, we just heard that we were not accurate.
I sat out, I sat at the bus stop every morning for two weeks, Heidi.
The bus stop is in front of the driveway, which says
Oh, 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 please, please, Chris. If you want to, we're, we're, hold on, just please, gentlemen, we are in the middle of a conversation about closing the public hearing. Let us finish that, if we, we keep it open. I just want to understand, I'm just, I'm confused because we're not asking the Kingsley to respond to things. We have their applicant, uh, their agent, and we have never done that. If that is the reason, I think that is a really bad precedent for this board to set.
Well, I'm sorry if you feel that way, Neil. I, I think we've heard a lot of remarks from, that of concerns about the, the proposed
What, what do you
Jason, please, please.
Oh, I found all of the remarks concerning. When neighbors come and say they have concerns, I'd like them to be answered.
Can I just recap? We have an existing, we're not adding. It's not, it's not an additional. It's or. It's, it's not and the apartments. It's, we used to have a, uh, we have a, uh, uh, two apartments on, on the second floor. We have a business on the ground floor. They're converting the business on the ground floor to two one-bedroom apartments, and that's the total, there's no more, there's no more additional space available. So there's, there's a redu, there's a, there's a reduction in the amount of traffic and parking on, on the site with this proposed amended site plan. There's a, there's a reduction.
From the current use, from the potential use, is that what you're saying?
No, from the current use. From the current, from the current, currently approved site plan.
I would like answers to the question of, are, how many trucks are on the property? How many trucks are daily on the property? When do they travel?
But let us, Jason is here, and Jason, I think it is totally fair that Heidi has questions, and I'd like you not to dismiss her questions. But let's answer the questions. I think that is different than asking the public for more input. And I think those are two totally different things. If you feel like we need more input from the public, we can keep it open. If you have questions of Jason, which I do as well, and those are very legitimate questions, that is not something we typically keep the public hearing open. We keep the public hearing open because we need more input from the public. If we, if you need more input from the public, then we can keep it open. Just, this is, that's a question for Heidi, not for you, Jason.
I think that the issues raised tonight mean that we need to take a closer look.
I'm not disagreeing with you. That, that is unrelated to the opening and the closing of the public hearing. We do our diligence. We've done diligence for months, if
I guess, I guess my feeling is, after taking a closer look, it would be helpful to me to have the public here with the, with the hearing open, so we can sort out these issues. I mean, it's one month.
Steve, could you just give some cut, some clarity about what the purpose of the public hearing is?
Well, here's, here's the situation. It's a revised plans being submitted to the public, and you can hold a public hearing open to allow those issues to be fully vetted and get input from the public. To say, however, well, first off, let me say, a board member does not need to give a reason for their vote. If you decide you want to vote that you're not going to close the public hearing, you don't have to explain yourself. You can just vote that way. Um, but if you want to hold a public hearing open because the applicant isn't here, it's really not a reason to hold the public hearing open. The applicant is not required to appear before the planning board. They send their consultants, they send their representatives, and they can speak for them. But if you have issues that you want to have addressed and then see if there's public input on that, you're, you're free to say, I'm, I'm not going to vote to close the public hearing.
Anyway, we've had the vote, and that's, that's that. Okay, so next stop is, step is to take those notes you've written and maybe ask the questions of Jason of what you want to clarify. So why don't we do that?
I want to answer your questions, Heidi. That's why I'm here.
Thanks, Jason.
So I see your hand raised. We will get to you when we're finished with this part, unless you want to just keep it up for stretching purposes.
Whatever makes sense.
That, that, go ahead, Heidi.
So we heard that there's a lot of cars parked in front of the, the property, that they seem to be different cars all the time, um, that there's trucks. I understand the Kingsleys have a, you know, an active business. I, I, I would just like to know who's using the property, how many trucks are there, how many cars are there? Is there, you know, I assume there's residents, are there two cars per, per apartment now? Um, how many more cars do we think that there's, there are going to be? I mean, I, it is, it's a mixed-use neighborhood, but I think we have to hear the residents who, who are concerned um, and just make sure that we, we make the right decision. You know, is the, is the driveway in fact muddy and messy? I, I mean, I, we haven't seen it in ages. We, it was ages ago, years ago that we went out there. I would just like to be able to take a, a close look. I don't know if you, the answers to these questions, I mean, is it the case that it's always different cars or there's
I don't, I mean, I don't know how many, there, there, there's, the, the two apartments, I, we, there's, there's three spaces allotted for those on, on the, I believe, on the site plan. There's one and a half spaces per unit. Um, we have a, and the same thing regardless if it's, if it's two or, or one bedrooms, it's, it's one and a half spaces per unit. So there's a total of six we have now. We have a total of proposed, six total proposed spaces. Um, I believe there's, um, I believe there's ten parking spaces as part of the approved site plan. The, I believe, seven trucks and, and, and the three spaces for above. I don't believe that they have ever, I, as far as the trucks are concerned, I don't know if that's trucks coming, that was part of the construction, or it's, it's trucks up and down route, because they just finished construction. So, I don't know if that's, those are, that's construction, or if it's just vehicles using old Albany posts, if they're passing by. I don't believe, I don't believe they've ever used this building for their, they've never executed their business out of these four bays that they have designated. I don't believe they've ever been used as part of their business. So, it's not their, it's not their, it's not their business.
This is, this is one of the things, like you're saying, you don't believe they've ever used it, but I don't feel like I have a lot of con- I mean, it would be good if we don't act on belief, but rather act, I'm not, I'm not criticizing your use of that word, but I feel like that doesn't have quite enough concreteness to feel like, okay, we really know what's happening at the property. You know what I mean?
I don't want to be dismissive, but regardless of that, it's gonna end. Right? It's, it's, there's, there's, there's no more trucks.
Because they're for the construction.
Because they're, no, because the, because it's all gonna be resident, they're not gonna, there's not gonna be residential-
Jason, let's just back up for a moment, because I, I am worried that maybe Heidi is not clear about what we're being proposed here. What we're being proposed here, I believe, is what was once approved as a commercial property, you're now turning what were the commercial purposes into entirely apartments or multifamily. And there will be no more commercial operations at this thing, which never happened anyway because it wasn't finished. Correct?
But that's what's so confusing.
I, what, it wasn't finished yet, so they were, they were never operated there. Is that correct?
The, the, the building has a CO, and it's, it's ready for-
It's ready for it, has not operated as a business yet.
I believe, I believe that is the case.
Okay. So, what we are trying to get a site plan or discussion going is to become a multifamily property that will have no more commercial activity at it. Whether it had commercial activity yet or not, it sounds like we're not certain, and we need to ask the owners. Because you've said, "I believe," and I understand that "I believe" is not "I know." So, we are trying to get a site plan approval or conversation going about a four-unit apartment complex, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's what we're talking about. Regardless of whether there were trucks or there will be needed for conversion work in steady state, this is for four apartments.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's gonna be no more-
Commercial.
Commercial.
Is that all clear to everyone now? Okay.
But so, where are the Kingsley's gonna operate their, their commercial trucks?
Doesn't matter to us. They were approving this site. We don't have to ask where their trucks are. This is, we're asking about this property. I think they're operating it somewhere else.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly.
So, do, are there other questions? I want to itemize your questions so we can get a productive conversation next time.
I need to, I, I would like to review the materials more closely, based on the comments we heard tonight. I can't instantly respond to the neighbor's remark. I want to look at it.
So, why don't we do this? Let's, let's stop for tonight, since we've done that. We are, keep the public hearing open. Next time, if we can, and it would be great if you can get your questions to Jason ahead of time so we can have a more productive discussion. If not, fine, we can do it here live, and then we'll have the public hearing open, the public can comment on what the com, and the responses from Jason. Okay? Everyone okay with that? Okay, let's move on. All right. What's that? Do, do you have something new to say?
Yes.
Please come up then.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because there's no drawings, there's no specs, there's no nothing on the screen here. There are four bays on the first floor, and we're talking about turning them, there's nothing there. Uh, we're talking about turning them into two apartments. I just want to make, I have no visual and I have nothing to go off of here.
There's nothing, unfortunately.
I have the floor. In my, my other question is also, are we changing the use of this property to residential only or continuing to keep it a mixed-use property so that they can continue to possibly operate a business out of it and a multifamily unit?
So, this, this is the, this is the front elevation.
Yep, four bays.
These are four bays, and they're gonna be four, the, the bays are just gonna be windows. They're just gonna be, they're just, the base, there's, nothing's gonna change, there's just gonna be windows now.
And these are gonna be one-bedroom apartments?
Two, yes, two, uh, uh, apartment over here and a one-bedroom apartment over here.
So, does this mean that this whole property will now change to a residential use only?
No, it's a, it's a, it's still gonna be a-
Zoned as it's zoned.
It's gonna be zoned as a-
So, they could operate a business out of this still?
No, the approval's just for residential, there's no approval for commercial on this one.
No, there isn't, but I, I think you said about like a future.
Future?
They'd have to come back, just like the other thing, they'd have to come back for an amended site plan again.
Okay. Just want to make sure that there's not gonna be, you know, I live next door. I, I see this. It, it is already busy. I can't imagine more. Thank you very much.
Once this is approved, there, there can't be storage of vehicles, parking of commercial vehicles.
There's gonna be no commercial vehicles after this month.
Of, stored or parked there, yeah, unless they're working on the property.
Unless they're working.
But that's, that's, if they get their site plan approval, that's, that's it.
All right, thank you, Jason.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next, next order of business is the Hudson Islands Reserve. We, we directed Ron to approve res, to write, approval resolutions, and the board is here to vote on those. Give me the ad?
Yeah, just a couple of, a couple of clarifications with regard to the, uh, proposed resolution. Um, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the board. I know this has been a long road, and I just came in on the, the very last, you know, stretch, but I appreciate it. With regard to the approving resolution, there are just a couple of points I just want to clarify. First, I, I would like the, if possible, the, the, the resolution recites that the planning board approved the HOA documents, there's no reference to the town board approval, if that could be included. There are some minor things that really are not substantive. But with regard to a, a couple of things on the conditions, there is a request for, and appropriate, that, that we have DOT approval for the highway work permit. This is, there's a bit of a, a nuance here, maybe Glenn can explain it, but that approval comes in three phases, and it's really the second phase where everything is sort of set in stone, and the third phase is just more of a kind of an operational component. So, we, we'd like that to just clarify that we're talking about the, the phase two, uh, DOT approval.
Can we insert that language, Ron? Phase two?
Yeah, the way it's written now is we're asking for a, the completion of the entire DOT application process. They're asking for a highway work permit. Now, what the applicant's indicating is that, as described, it's a three-step process with DOT. I believe they may have gotten to the point of getting design approval, so the next step, that's, that's still prior to the receipt of a highway work permit. To get a highway work permit involves physical filing of applications, identification of contractors, posting of bonds, things of that sort. So, they can describe where they think they are in the process and what, what they would offer instead of providing that highway work permit prior to the signature of the chairman on the plat.
I could just add a little bit to that, is that there's an amount of work that we want to do before we do the actual breaking through and building the intersection. And state DOT wants to have that valid permit, that last part, valid for a shorter period of time as possible. So, part of this is to accommodate that, so we'll get the permit down the road when we're ready, ready to break through, do what traffic controls we have to do and all that stuff so we can get in and out and not have a open permit for any longer than the DOT
I can add one thing.
Listen.
Is that the language in you already?
So, the, the, the first phase is the conceptual approval, and the second phase is that they've pretty much already have reviewed all of your plans, they're happy with all of your plans, and then phase three is when you say, "This is my contractor, this, these are our insurance certificates," and they, and they take all of that, and then they give you the permit. But phase two, the plans have already been approved. It's phase three that you, they issue the permit.
So, sorry, you're asking for a change in the language?
Just that it's-
To say phase two?
To say phase two.
I don't see anything wrong. Does anyone have a problem with that? Does that sound okay with you guys? Okay.
Couple more items. There is a specification that the plat will contain a note stating that, um, that, that additional provision, uh, information will be provided to the fire department about sprinklers. If we could, if the plat could just state, provide a note that all houses will be individually sprinklered, because tho- those specifications will eventually be borne out in the building permit process. And again, keep in mind that any house of over three thousand square feet's gonna go through site plan review.
Sorry, what are you asking for a change in? What's the change you want?
Just to, that, that note, just, that the note simply recite that all homes will be serviced by individual sprinkler systems. Yeah.
Jeff, is this the third bullet point under sub-H?
Yes.
So, it's gonna be written into the, the approval resolution already this way? You wanted the language on the note to match? Is that what you're asking?
I'm, I'm just asking that the approval resolution, if we could change the language, just say that the plat note will simply say that-
Prior to issuance of building permits for homes, um, they will provide additional information to the fire department.
If that, if that language is there, then we're fine with that.
This is what he wants.
Yeah, what's wrong with that?
Yeah.
That's what he's-
I have no problem with that, dude.
He wants, he wants the board to agree.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we understand what he's asking for.
If, if that, yeah, I, it was a slight change, but if that language, I'm, I'm, that language is fine as well, Steve. Prior, prior to the issuance of-
You gotta tell us what you want.
Prior to the issuance of building permits for homes. And, you've got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. It's up to the board.
Yeah, and, uh, the only other two are, are to, for performance bonding to reflect performance security. I've noted that as well, uh, and that's it.
Okay, Ron, do you have these edits?
I will let them, edit them.
No, I mean, I mean, you, you have them so you can-
No, I have the markup. It obviously will take a little bit of rewrite, but we can clean this up.
Yeah, I, I, here's the thing, we, I got, this has been too long for me to just like not to sign it until we get these, this one clean done. So, we need to get this done. So, Ron's gotta make the edits and then show it back to us. If you want those edits, we're gonna have to go look at it. I can't, I can't take handwritten comments and-
I guess the understanding is that the board, the board does accept or understand the edits that are being discussed tonight to give me guidance on the, on the specific rewrite to accomplish.
Do we need to vote on that?
Oh, no, no, I, I think you can ask to have it just submitted, then you'll vote on it when it comes in.
Yeah.
Um, I think, though, you're right, you probably want to wait until the next meeting.
I gotta see it, we gotta see it. So, I, I, just, we don't need a, we don't need a vote, but is everyone okay with those comments? I've seen, oh, whoa, 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 whoa. As the Chinese said, be careful what you wish for. Yes? Do you want a month or do you want the edits? The month is worth more to you than the, the edits? Okay. We're not having a public hearing, ma'am.
The town board needs to approve the H O A.
They have, they did already. They did on January, and we approved that.
Okay, so I have a motion, maybe, do you want us to say, Glenn?
I'd just like you to clarify where you're going.
I'm, I'm, well, we, we directed Ron to approve resolutions, and now we're gonna vote on me being able to vote to sign it. Yeah?
I'm confused, though, are we, are you doing it with the markup?
No, we're not doing it with the markup.
The markups, go.
We're not, we're not taking the markups and we're editing it, we're signing this version unless it's-
Because all the markups came from the applicant, right? Not us.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay, we have a motion to sign the resolution as, approve the resolution as submitted by Ron.
I'll make that one.
Thank you, Dennis. No one wants to second this?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. Let me hear, just hang on to this for a little bit. All right, good, thank you. All right, you're welcome. All right. New business, J Mark. Wait, Jason, you didn't drag the applicants here tonight? Where are they?
No, I'm, I'm-
Are we allowed, can we go forward?
People always ask me, "What, do I need to be there?" And I'm like, "Yeah, you should, but it's not required." But now, you know what? Now I'm like, "Yeah, you gotta be there."
Now you gotta get them there. Now you gotta get them there. All right.
So, I know that there's, um- We had the site meeting, obviously, and-
Joe, Dennis, myself, were there. What's that? And Peter. Yeah, okay. Beautiful house, gorgeous land.
And, uh, so, you know, I think we're just looking for the, um, we did all the, I think we did everything, I mean, I think we're just looking to, for a public hearing.
You haven't said anything, and you haven't done this yet.
Yeah, we just, we're just looking for the public hearing.
All right, so, I mean, as I recall from the public ear, the site visit, Ron was there, there was nothing to report.
Right, right. You got, you have a memorandum from me just summarizing discussions at the meeting, but I think the board understood the project clearly, recognized it would not be very significant site disturbances that result or tree removals that'll, that'll occur. I think your, your goal is to determine, since it's already been deemed a minor project, whether you wish to conduct a public hearing or not. It's discretionary for minor projects.
I mean, let me ask my, you guys who were there, thoughts on having a public hearing?
I personally don't think it's necessary.
I, I, I concur. Heidi, you have a view?
I mean, I couldn't attend the site visit because I had a death on my family. So, I, I, I guess if you all think they're, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, here's the thing, the only people-
I read the memo. I mean, that's all I have to go on, really.
It's a public meeting anyway, the site visit, and the only people who came were the caretakers who live outside, and, um-
So, I'm fine, no public hearing.
I would subscribe, no one will, no, it's, since it's a private piece of land with a fence with a house that's a mile in.
Yeah.
No one would have, unless you have ever visited the house, you would hardly have an opinion about it, um, because they didn't come to the site visit. So, I mean, do we need a motion on that to not have a public hearing? Fine, can I have a motion to not have a public hearing as we proceed forward? Thank you, Dennis. Second. Thank you, Joe.[1708.88] Thank you, Joe. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion passes. There'll be no public hearing. Next step, Steve.
Next step is you check if Ron has any technical comments regarding the, uh, the site plan. And, uh, if he is ready to go, you consider directing him to prepare approval resolutions.
Ron, do you have any outstanding issues that the applicant or the-
There's minor technical issues that I'll resolve with the applicant, but, uh, if, if you're prepared to direct me to prepare a resolution, we can do that for the next meeting.
My, my opinion is we saw a very minor situation, which, and the only sad thing is this house is magnificent, as many of us identified, and sad to see a beautiful home of, uh, some, uh, some style and character, yes, well said, go, but that's not my decision to make. So, um, I see no reason to delay directing you to prove, to create approval resolution. Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Dennis. Second. Thank you, Joe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention. So Ron, we look forward to seeing your approval resolution at the next meeting. Okay, thank you, Jason. J-Mark, new business. What is that schematic on the wall? Wow, that is cool.
That's how it all works.
That is, that is quite a-
Uh, so, I'm James from J-Mark Jewelers. I am the foolish applicant who showed up today.
Why, it's not, it's only been an hour and a half, it's not bad. You weren't here when we did 10:30 sometimes.
Oh, you're absolutely right, although next time I will definitely bring popcorn. But more importantly, um, so, J-Mark Jewelers, uh, the showroom, um, on the Route 9 corridor there. Uh, currently, it has a brick exterior with one simple, uh, level roof. Uh, the idea of the plan is to take it, add two dormers, and then, um, add a, essentially just a box of breezeway above the front entryway. It's not going to be closed in, just something for my clients to stand under, since we have two mantraps and I don't want them to get wet. Then cosmetically, and we're going to take down the old brick that, I love my grandparents, but I hate the fact that they put it there, uh, and replace it with some nice natural stone, as well as, um, Borden-Batten-style hardy board. And that is essentially the scope of the project.
Sir, are you adding any space?
Uh, there will be no interior space added.
So you're just doing it cosmetically?
Correct.
Steve, could you just remind us why we're seeing this?
Well, when the site plan approval is granted and then an applicant wants to make changes to the approved plan, they have to come before the planning board. And if they can demonstrate that the change is both minor and consistent with the approved plan, you can skip the additional planning process if, unless you have some additional things you want to see on it, if something comes to your attention, then go right to an approval resolution. You don't have to go through a public hearing on it. If it turns out that it's minor, but, um, or excuse me, major, but consistent, then you have to go through the site plan process again. If you find out that it's major and not consistent, then they have to go through both the special permit and site plan process again. So this applicant, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, got approval for basically a rectangular building. And they wanted to, they came to this board a few years ago and got approval to put a, an addition on the rear. It wasn't a large addition, it was a small square addition. And I don't think it was ever built. And now what they want to do is put a smaller addition, a little box, an entryway, on the front. In addition, there are some architectural improvements, putting dormers, I think, two dormers on. And there's a change in the materials. So what you have to take a look at is what you've approved in the past, what they're asking you to approve now, and make a determination which of those three slots it fits into. Is it minor and consistent, in which case you can just go ahead and approve it? Again, unless there's some conditions or something you feel you should add. If, is it, uh, minor, um, is, is it larger but consistent with the plan nonetheless? In which case it's just a site plan approval. Is it large and not consistent with what was approved, which pretty clearly isn't the case? But I mean, if it was, then they'd have to start at square one with the application.
You wanted to ask what you were saying about the previous, my legal mumbo jumbo, I can't talk about all that stuff.
That addition wasn't done.
Uh, so to directly answer that, while it'll make my life difficult, uh, no, the addition was complete and I have a close C of O on that. Yeah?
So this is an addition to the, in the back, I didn't think it was ever built, it was built?
Yeah, it was built, yes.
So how much you add into the front, then? At 12 by?
Uh, I think it was 11 foot out.
So you add 130 square feet.
Essentially, it's going to be a box over the entryway, so the front of the building does not extend any distance. And, uh, the entryway is going to stop at the edge of the sidewalk, so it won't encroach on the parking lot. But it is basically, uh, on the plans here, an 11-foot 3 by 13-foot box over the entryway.
Is it an awning or does it go all the way down?
Uh, it doesn't go, uh, it's going to have two pillars that go down as, uh, supports, and then it's going to be attached to the building as well. And then, as you see, a box going up.
All right, well, it's kind of more an engineering question, whether an awning and two dormers and a change in the materials is major or minor or what. So I would defer to my colleague here.
Now, again, it's, the existing building is 1,800 square feet. So they're describing 130 or 140 square foot addition, which is not actually an enclosed area. It's just over the entry to the building. It's for the board to decide, is that deemed minor? They're not changing staffing, they're not changing parking. It's just cosmetic changes to the building.
But it's not occupied space, it's just open air space to create an visual.
It's not going to be occupied space, it's, uh-
It's open to the ceiling with a fixture of some sort, I guess.
That's correct. It's, it's not going to be occupied space, there, there will be no access to it. It's essentially just a big old box to keep my clients dry and, and really, the purpose of the, of the project is, my showroom does look very nice on the inside. And on the outside, there are, there are some pizza places in Cold Spring that look nicer than my building. And I sell very nice jewelry. So I'm just trying to make the outside look like the inside.
Is that a $14.95 purchase?
Yeah, exactly. I'm just trying to make the outside look like the inside.
Understood, understood. Okay, so the, sorry, your three criteria, minor inconsistent, large inconsistent, large and inconsistent, yes?
Minor and consistent, major, no, excuse me, minor, excuse me, major but consistent, or major and inconsistent, those are the three boxes.
And I'll ask you one more question to help with definitions, and for us, a major is defined as?
Uh, major is defined as something, well, it's, um, not actually defined per se, it's in Ron's memo here to assist you with major. Help me out, Ron, what is it saying here regarding definition of major?
There's, there's no clear definition, it's just a matter for-
So you're using it in the classic terms, these are not meaning like major as in the way the word means, as opposed to some analytical?
Right, right.
You want to look at the project that was approved before and you decided how large it is.
All right, folks, questions as a board, and I'll come at the end of your questions to ask the question about whether you think this is major or minor. Any board questions? No one's got any questions?
I don't, it seems really minor to me.
It seems really minor to me. Okay. Okay, well, do we need to take a vote about whether it's minor inconsistent? Would someone like to make a motion to state whether this is, to state that this is minor and inconsistent, uh, consistence, excuse me. Minor and consistent, thank you, Heidi. Second.
I'll second.
Joe, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, this is minor and consistent, therefore?
Unless the board, well, you have to see if Ron has any technical comments.
No, none.
Ron has none.
So if that's the case, you can direct him to prepare, uh, to prepare approval resolution for next meeting.
Motion to prepare approval resolutions for J-Mark.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Dennis. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Okay, Ron, we look forward to seeing that.
Yeah.
Go forth for the third, the fourth generation.
Thank you, I have one very silly question.
Yes.
Uh, the resolution will be prepared, will be prepared for next month?
Correct, and we will vote on it and we will sign it next month.
Do I have to be here? I'm going to be in Oklahoma visiting my sister for Easter.
Brother, I, I don't know what to say anymore.
Sorry.
You do whatever you need to do, we will be voting on it next month and it will be delivered, unless something happens, you will have a resolution next month.
Okay, I just need to ask that, if, if I have to be here for the resolution, well, I have to miss Easter with my sister.
I do not need you here.
Okay.
Okay.
I know, that's a heated question.
All right, thank you. Final item for the night, gatekeepers. From the minor to the major.
Major.
I don't know, 10,000 square feet sounds like something.
Okay, so I'm Matthew Noviello, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And that's the first question I had, is, I don't know how this got classified as major. Because there's an existing 10,000-square-foot building with an existing site plan approval, and the use of that is not changing. This project is about merely using some of the vacant land that has no trees. We're, I noticed on Ron's suggestion, he suggested that we do a tree survey, and I think that's not a bad idea. But, but my modification to that would be, there's a tree line beyond which we will not disturb. And matter of fact, we're not going that close to the tree line. So I'd like to show the tree line where it is. Then there's a couple trees in the area where we will be working that are not going to be disturbed. We will measure those trees and show those trees on the survey and on the site plan so that you can confirm that these were the trees that are here before the project was approved, and these are the trees that will not be disturbed. Now, the reason why I asked about this minor and major, and I'm glad that you brought that up, Mr. Zuckerman.
I actually didn't bring it up, I was being funny. Can I just pause you, could you just go back to the beginning?
Yes.
Hi, we're trying to build this thing and what we're trying to do. Why don't we just start there, because I don't, I think we jumped over that and went right to major/major. What is the purpose of the project?
So, so there's an existing site with 11 acres. Most of it is wooded. There's an existing 10,000-square-foot building on the property. What we're proposing is no change to the building, no change to the septic, no change to the well, no change to anything except on some of the existing open area, which had previously been used for various purposes, to get approval to do outside material storage. I think it's important to note that this site is in a critical environmental area. It's in the Clove Creek aquifer. We recognize that. The material we plan on stirring, stor- storing there is all inert. The storage units will be outdoors, so they'll be like concrete block bins to store gravel and item four and other, uh, building materials. We do not have a tenant in mind as of yet, but we're trying to propose a use so that we can get some rental income from this vacant land that's currently cleared and open. Because we're near the Clove Creek aquifer, we, we can put a berm right near, you see the blue line there? Where it shows like the 100-foot, uh, setback from anything that was considered at one point to be wetlands? We can put a berm along there so that we can make sure that if anything does happen, it does not reach anything close to the aquifer or the, uh, critical environmental area. There, as I said, there's no increase in impervious, there's no increase in anything other than trying to make the site prettier. We're talking about putting some trees along Route 9 to try to, you know, brighten up the, the curb appeal of the site and put some storage behind the trees on the, what looks like the lower right side of that, uh, land that you see there. Unless people have questions.
Okay, Ron? Want to comment on this project and its classification?
Sure, you've got a technical memorandum from my office. I've tried to summarize what we understand to be the scope of the project and the initial considerations for the board. As described, it's, it's going to be occupied by a landscaping contractor, not yet identified. Uh, the issue of major or, uh, minor project is the first, uh, determination you have to make. Uh, they've identified a variety of areas to be used on the property. It's not clearly defined the extent of the disturbance that'll occur, or occupancy that'll occur. But there's a, uh, they're in various areas of this open portion of the site on the south side of the building. Just considering how they would propose access and routinely be moving through the property, you have a classification that if there's more than 10,000 square feet of disturbance that, uh, you would, uh, that defined as a major project, and that's what I've suggested that you describe this as. The significance only relates to whether there's a mandated public hearing or whether there's, the public hearing is discretionary. All aspects of this board action is the same. So there's no, no harm to call the project major if you consider that it's on Route 9 and you very likely would want to have a public hearing anyway. So in terms of major or minor, as I said, in my text to you, I'm recommending that you consider it a major that, and that only, that caveat is only that you would mandate a public hearing on the project. The processing of the application would remain the same in any event.
I, I, I think you're right on the, we're showing you have a pub-
If I may respond, so I guess if the, if the critical determining factor is disturbance, there is very little disturbance, because installing bins or racks, I don't think that's, uh, I get the number you said, 10,000 square feet of disturbance? There's not going to be 10,000 square feet of bins or racks. The existing area where the, uh, material will be stored has previously been traveled upon by vehicles. It's not new disturbance, it's existing. So there's very little new disturbance that's not already pre-existing.
The quotation that I see in Ron's memo, which I assume you have?
Yes.
Says, quote, alteration and active use of 10,000 square feet of land with or without structures.
Okay.
And that, my sense is, if you're going to have concrete bins, you're going to probably need some sort of structured thoroughfares, like little lanes to get to it. Like, I can imagine there's some structure, you're not going to just have people randomly walking muck around this property.
Well, what I'm saying is, the area that, where they will be is already has been in current use and traveled with vehicles. So-
We haven't, we haven't done a site visit, so I can't answer that with words.
That may help.
You've probably walked it a bunch.
That may help.
I've driven by it a bunch, but I would not-
I actually did walk it a lot, so.
As I described, at the end of the day, the board recognizes that the project is on a very visible location on Route 9, and you very likely would, uh, insist on having a public hearing as well. So in, in any event, uh, the, the issue of major or minor, it comes to me.
Anyway, we heard your point, we got our counsel.
You could appreciate my, my interest in minimizing the whole, everything, so.
Well, again, I think you just hear what he said, we're going to do a public hearing regardless, and the language matters. So I think we'll, I think we got your input on it.
Very good.
Okay, good.
So, maybe, is there any other questions I can answer?
Board members, Dennis.
How about, uh, equipment storage?
Yes.
What about equipment storage? That, that's my question.
Well, there will be trucks, we presume, with a landscaping company. There may be earth-moving vehicles like a front loader.
Right.
And they'll just be stored outside. Right now, right now-
I know you don't have a tenant yet, I'd-
Correct.
Projections, any type of projection of how many pieces of equipment?
Probably two, maybe two trucks, one loader, maybe two loaders.
That would be stationed there typically?
Yeah, I would think less than half dozen pieces of equipment. You know, maybe two dump trucks, two loaders, and maybe somebody drives a car to get in the dump truck or get in the loader.
Well, we had other conditions on Route 9 where people took advantage of, uh, space and overloaded with parked vehicles and dismantled vehicles, things like that.
Yeah, no, no, we didn't want to see any of that.
No, we needed to work.
No, no. No, the, the point is to try to make the site look better than it did. I think you've noticed that since gatekeepers took over the site, they've cleaned it up, it looks better than it used to.
Any, anytime we had a meeting, uh, with the owners, it's always been, I, I felt it's been positive, so.
Yeah, I think they really care about the aesthetics, you know? They've lived in this community their whole lives and, you know, they feel vested in it. And, you know, they're, they're trying to clean this site up and they don't have any problem spending money to, you know, improve the curb appeal, which I think helps our, all of us, you know? And, uh, you know?
Thank you.
And, uh, you know, I think it's a good use of the site, because it's minimal risk in a, in a site that has environmental concerns.
Okay, other questions from board members?
I do have one.
Well, I asked the board members, you're not a board member.
I want to go back to a point I made, because I didn't get an answer from Ron, and I was hoping I could, about the trees. Is it any problem if we give you the tree line?
I'd have no objection to that.
Thank you.
And as indicated by the chair, that'll be identified better, should they conduct a site visit.
Okay, board member, other questions? Heidi, Joe?
No.
Okay, I, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I, I, I don't get a sense of what you're trying to get done. This picture is unfortunately inadequate for what I'm trying to understand. As I understand, this is the, this is the land, the nice piece of land, south of the building with the blue roof, yes?
Yes.
Okay. I don't get a sense of how you're trying to structure this property to use it. I would like a drawing, and I don't need an answer right now, I need a drawing that shows me how you're going to lay out the usage of this property for the purposes of a tenant. Is it, are you just plopping it anywhere, wherever they want to put their concrete thing?
Yeah, it's the purple.
I can't tell on this drawing.
The purple, the purple is the new, the new storage unit, that's all it is. It's that small, it's that minor of a change.
How are they going to, what's the ingress egress to there?
Same driveway, see the driveway there, the existing driveway in dark black?
I'm sorry, so you can have people drive here and then how is it getting here?
Drive right across the land, as they do, as they do now. As they do now. That's existing use now.
Okay.
So the domain changes, we're adding the storage bins.
I, I, I would imagine you'd have a little path you'd identify that the- Please, why don't you come up to the podium, then?
My name is, uh, Matthew Solcetto. I guess I'll put this on the record for us. My family has been here for 40 years. I was born in Butterfield before it shut down.
Thank you.
Yes, and, uh, so we care, you know? Originally, if you look, there's, um, actually, that whole back area of the property, maybe a site visit would even help for everyone to see it, is hard-packed dirt that has been traversed on for a long period of time. So while it might seem on a site map that it's just like no man's land and you're just parking a vehicle there, if you go to the site plan, there's a dirt, there's already existing dirt trail, like path that goes back there, it's wide open, and it's really just someone's just like pulling off on, on land that's already hard-packed, if you will. You know, so it, it's not like, uh, you're just parking in the middle of nowhere. It's, it's all pretty packed-down land back there. packed-down land back there.
Okay. Obviously, this will be benefited by, not only a site visit, but I ask you when we go out there to mark where these-
Sure.
Because, and if you're not having a dedicated travel route from the road and your drive, the highway, to your driveway, to these, like six, six areas.
Those six spots are where we imagine they would park the trucks, it's pulling, it's a big open area right there, and that's kind of like the tip of it, there's a rock wall that's on the other side, and kind of pulling up to the end of that.
So these six spots are not the concrete blocks, this is the parking?
So the concrete blocks are in the front, towards where the tree, the new tree line would be, we'd be planting trees staggered there. In the back, a little further, those six, it's an area, it's 22 by 72, and like, he, Matthew had mentioned, we envisioned, you know, two, two to three dump trucks, a front-end loader, some extra equipment in that area. Really, that area could move all around that area, because it's just an open space as it is right now.
Okay. All right. Well, that'd be helpful, I think, for us to, certainly for me to see it, maybe my colleagues don't feel the same. All right. Thank you. Other questions? Any other questions? Okay, we've got some administrative stuff to do. Can I have a motion to refer this to Putnam County Department of Planning?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, Heidi. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstention. Motion passes. I guess we should move to declare this a major project?
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to declare this a major project, unless someone feels otherwise?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstention. Motion passes. Do we really need a referral to Putnam County Health? Ron?
Just informal review, but it'd be appropriate, since there's an additional use being proposed for the property. They're also not identifying any new sanitary facilities for this occupancy. They're proposing that the existing, or that any future employees or staff utilize the building for their needs.
Let's go back to the, why then, to the county health?
Again, just to confirm that county health wouldn't require any formal facilities for this use.
So for information purposes only. Okay. Can I have a motion, then, to make a referral to county health, please?
I'll move.
Thank you, Heidi. Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll reel one thing real quick.
Sure.
Sorry. We could go back to the 239M referral to county planning. As per Ron's memo, there are significant problems with the EAF that was submitted, and that needs to be redone in order for the referral to county planning to be done, you have to submit the complete, the complete submission.
What were the, can you repeat the shortcomings of the EAF, please?
Well, most of them are outlined in Ron's memo, but you can start with, there's a section that says there are no involved agencies, including you. So, I mean, the applicant understands, he's going to redo the, in accordance with Ron's memo. That's no issue. We'll get that into you as quickly as possible.
Thank you for saying this, Steve. Okay, you want us to make a referral to the State DOT, given that this is the ingress egress?
Yes.
That's fair. I think that makes sense. May I have a motion to refer this to State DOT?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Joe. Second. Dennis, any discussion?